Good evening and welcome back. This is our first board meeting for the 2015-2016 school year. It's Wednesday, September the 2nd, 2015. And I'd like to welcome everyone and hope that everyone had a great summer and are relaxed and rejuvenated and ready for the next school year. I'd also, I'd like to welcome everyone in the audience and I'd like to recognize that we have a new superintendent at our table. Superintendent Jackie Newton has now joined us, so welcome Jackie. Director Uwali has officially retired and we have Acting Director Miller at the table. On the phone, we have Vice Chair Collard, Trustee Harvey Hope, and shortly, if not already there, Trustee, Student Trustee Schneider. I would like to ask if you have anything that makes noise? If you could please turn it off or mute it? And can I have someone approve our agenda tonight? Trustee Gravence and seconded by Trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, could I, a sec, I have to get to the voting control. I can't remember how to do this. It has been a long summer. Next topic. Next topic. Okay. All those in favor, please vote. Apparently, I'm, okay. Trustee Schneider can't vote, I don't believe, because she's not online, so... 14 potential? All those, so that passes, thank you. End vote. Okay. I wonder what Trustee Harvey Hope's doing that's got the siren coming? Okay. Do we have any possible declarations of conflict of interest tonight?
I didn't do anything, by the way.
Thank you. That's not, that's not a declaration of conflict of interest, is it? Okay. So, we have no delegations tonight and no presentations. And I also wanted to remind everyone that we are being recorded. It is live on the web. Our former director may be watching, trying, so, and all of our other followers, so, and so we're being video voice recorded for your awareness. So, we're up to minutes of the meeting for June the 24th. Can I have a mover? Trustee Daniele, seconded by Trustee Pappan. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none? Not there. Oh, they're there. All those in favor? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Okay, so we're now up to business transacted in private session. So I know that we have a couple of items. "Be it resolved that the Alton District School Board authorize the Chair of the Board to offer David Uwali a day-to-day temporary position as Director of Education to be paid a per diem based on a daily rate calculated from his former annual salary for his duties until such time as a new Director of Education can assume the role." I will move that. Someone like to second it?
I would like to second that, please.
Seconded by Vice Chair Collard. I know they're backwards, I just... Okay, so, all those in favor? Is Trustee Harvey Hope on there? No. Trustee Harvey Hope? Oh, she is on there, but she's not online. That's interesting. Okay. So that passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is... Do we have a number for it?
Can you hear me?
Okay. Property matter number 15108. Do I have a mover? Trustee Pappan, seconded by Trustee Gravence. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? That passes. No, but that passes. It's one against and the rest are four. Thank you. The next item...
Can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
Are you supposed to be able to get to the video of the, of the meeting through the Alton District School Board website?
Yes, that's correct.
So it should be coming up on the website, the public website? In where? On the left-hand, top-left-hand corner?
I'm getting shakes in the back of the room and it's not working. They're headshakes.
Okay. Okay, so then just make sure that you tell me how the vote is, because I can't see the screen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's being worked on. Okay, so we're now up to our order paper. Does anybody have any comments or questions on our order paper tonight? Seeing none? We have no action items. So we're up to our student trustee reports. I'm not sure if Trustee Schneider's joined us. Is she back?
Sophie, if you're on the line, I'll let you go first, just to make things easier.
Sophie, are you there?
Guess I'll go first, then. So, I just want to start off by saying what I did this past summer and then that kind of connects to our plans for this year of student trustees. So, this past summer, I had the unique opportunity to attend the Shad Valley Program at the University of British Columbia during the month of July. And this program is focused on STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And so when I was at the program, I had the opportunity to attend lectures, seminars, and workshops with different and various leaders in those kind of areas in STEM. And so, me being more of a kind of sciency person, it was a really, really unique opportunity to learn more about the business side of things and the engineering side of things and listening at firsthand from people who are professionals in that field. So I'll give you an example. We got to listen to the former VP of Disney, and so he had some amazing things to say to us youth, kind of empower us towards business and then working in kind of the service industry and stuff like that. And so that was a really unique opportunity. And I also got to, because I'm a science guy, I really enjoyed the opportunity to listen to various professors talking about their work and what they're doing. We listened to one professor at the university who created his own cancer company where he's able to track and identify cancer. It's really interesting stuff. You guys can talk to me about it later. But it was a really, really unique opportunity. I really value that. And also the people there, I was able to connect with 54 other amazing youth across Canada. In my opinion, some of the greatest leaders and the leaders of our next generation. It was such a, just a memorable opportunity to go and have the ability to connect with them. And then what I've kind of learned from that is the importance of having community, and that's something I want to bring back to Senate and having a community and support network and the ability to have meaningful leadership when you have a community where everyone is able to all kind of come in and support an idea and where you have support for one another. So that was something, we called it an ohana at Shad, and that's something that we want to bring back to Senate, where we're making a community that all of us feel welcome to participate in, share our thoughts, and stuff like that. Computers, we starting to take away my notes. Um...
I'm distracting you. I want to find these notes.
Um, and so, one of the major parts of that was also we had to create a business as part of Shad and compete again with the other 12 universities across Canada. So, basically from all that stuff, I've learned some really, really important stuff with connecting people, because we were in groups of 10 to 11 people, and it's really, really hard when you have 10 and 11 smart and really intelligent people in a room at the same time and trying to get all the ideas bounced around at once and making sure that everyone's feeling heard and stuff like that and making sure that you're not hurting and treading on other people's feelings is also really important. So that's something I want to bring back. So more specifically for plans this year, Sophie was going to talk more about the Senate promotion side and our change in focus for HLS. I'm going to be talking quickly about two initiatives that we're looking to start up. One of them is the creation of this kind of new method for us to get student voice in our board. We're looking into creating kind of a new super council or like a president's council, which will be me and Sophie and then having student council representatives or presidents from each of the high schools in our board. And that's just another method of us just getting the voice, because Senate, we typically see the silent leaders. And that's kind of changed in focus where before we used to have the student council leaders, and we want to use this new kind of council in order to, if we want to do some sort of events in every single one of the boards, I mean, high schools and the board at the same time, that would be really, really easy to do through the creation of this new council. And plus, it's really, really an empowering way to get what's going on in all of the schools. And the other thing that we want to do is, a couple years ago, I believe back in 2011, the student trustees then, they did something called the Student Voice Report, and that was something that hasn't really came back up in the last four years. And that's something me and Sophie are looking to bring forth as a potential project for the Senate to work on during the first half of the year and then the second half of the year, they would work on our HLS project that we do every year. And so I believe, I'm still researching into this, because this is relatively new idea that kind of popped into my head. They did the Student Voice Report with the Equity and Inclusive Education Team, and they had about 235 students from all across the board, along with senators, they're, senators are facilitating kind of like a forum and panel discussions there. And then they had members that were part of the Equity and Inclusive Education Team be kind of members at each of these like kind of small table groups that they had at this kind of one-day event. So that's something that we're looking for, maybe potentially doing for the Senate in the first part of the year, maybe November, December. For me personally, my goal for this year was, last year was kind of just understanding the entire logistics of this massive, massive position in this, in this board. And so I kind of narrowed it down. I really want to focus on, this is something I did last year with Senate, was creating the partnership with local agencies in our community. So during Senate, I invited tons of people from the Hallton Multicultural Council, Council, sorry, Hallton Learning Foundation, stuff like that. And I'm really interested in this year in strengthening those relationships, because that is something that's, I find that is really important for students in our board to know that those agencies exist. And what I can do in my position, because I'm able to access the student voice and how I can relay that information on to other organizations and help them do their work. So I spoke with Leslie Mansfield at the Hallton Learning Foundation, and I'm going to be sitting as a member on their board to also try and help out with the student voice kind of discussions. And I've also spoken to Teresa Wilson in our board, who is the mental health lead right now, and I'm also working with her and potentially being part of her team and helping student voice and mental health and student senate kind of connect together as well. And one last thing is, I'm also going to be trying to work with the Hallton, our kids' network. That one, not 100% sure about that. I had an email come to me during the summer, and that's something I'm looking to try and strengthen that relationship and something where we can bring them into Senate, into our student senate meetings and help kind of create a connection there. So, kind of one of my lengthy reports, but I'm really, really excited for this year. It's going to be a really busy one, but I feel like this is your, kind of after Senate last year and how we had some good stuff and some bad stuff, and not really bad stuff, but stuff where we thought we could work on. I really wanted to hit upon those things this year and make Senate more powerful for students. And so, just trying to hit upon all those things. I'll be more than happy to accept any questions from trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophie, are you on? Okay, there are a couple people with questions for you. Thank you very much for your report. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. You inspire me, and I'm really, really impressed with the committees you join, and I would like to thank you for standing as a leader on this team and setting an example for the rest of us. Much appreciated. I wonder if when you have the dates of the student senate meetings, could you please share them with us as soon as possible, so you can put them in our calendars? So, and you did some great work last year. I'm looking forward to seeing what you do this year, now that you got that foundation to be around you. Well done.
Thank you. Trustee Graves?
Yes, I'll echo that. Welcome back. And yeah, just fantastic work. It sounds fantastic. I was just wondering, because I know you and Sophie are both in your final year this year. Do you have succession planning on your mind for this year? Have you thought about that at all? I know it's early in the year to think about it. I just thought I'd plant that, that seed. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, mentoring, mentoring a group of people along or identifying that talent.
There's definitely people who we've had come through or said it over the past four, five years, and I've seen them grow as leaders, and it's something that's really, really empowering for me, because I'm so honored to be part of that and watching them grow as leaders. And I think we've got plenty of leaders coming up in our next generation through Senate that are going to be really, really impactful, and they're going to do a lot of good stuff for this board. So, I'm not worried. I feel like there's a lot more people, like, one of the people I'm going to be working with on the Hallton Learning Foundation, he's also going to be part of the board, he's also on our Senate, he's a really strong leader as well. So I'm not worried at all.
Thank you. There's another speaker, so thank you very much for your report, Trustee Saha. And it sounds like you have a very ambitious year, and I'm sure that if Sophie was here, she would share similar type ambitions. So we'll look forward to seeing her at our next meeting, but I hope you had a great summer and rested and, it sounds like you're ready to go. Thank you. Okay, so we're now up to notices and motion. Do we have any notices and motion tonight?
Chair Amos, I believe Trustee Schneider is trying to get back on it. I don't think she understood why you asked her to leave the call, and she sent an email asking if someone could open the line again. I don't think she understands that she can come back on.
I have emailed her, and Gail has emailed her that she could come back on. She says she's waiting. Does she have the code? Because she says she's waiting for Sputnik.
Yep. She had the same problem earlier, but giving her the codes again, we're, we're...
If she comes on and she wants to speak, we'll go back to her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, notices and motion. Trustee Gravence?
Okay, so, following is in line with the goals of the multi-year plan. Increases in car traffic around the schools and on-school grounds have been noted throughout the region. And given the potential for injury due to increased car traffic and unsafe parking and drop-off practices, reducing car traffic has become a priority. Reducing traffic also reduces carbon monoxide emissions in schools' zones, which promotes healthy environmental changes. Other benefits are evident in research, which shows that there is a correlation between increase before school physical activity and positive academic advantage due to increased ability to concentrate. Finally, it has also been accepted that physical activity also helps reduce, reduce health risks for our students now as well as later in life and positive outcomes on mental health. So a motion will be coming to the table that will support active transportation campaigns to get our students walking, scootering, biking to school and home, and programs, campaigns and programs within our schools.
Thank you. So you will get that to Gail for the next. Thank you very much. Do we have any other notices and motion tonight? Seeing none? Sophie? Not yet? Okay. All right. There are no action items right now for the next board meeting, but I'm sure some may never know. Okay, we have information items. We're up to summer authority approvals, which I am assuming is Acting Director Miller, report 15107 on page 12 of your board package. And welcome Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Chair Amos. There's one item that Director Uwali signed off on in the summer, and I will leave it to Superintendent Cullen to explain what that was.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. The item related to the fact that the board was required to and did put forward to the ministry their capital priorities list. You recall, just at the tail end of the year, we get a list of the ministry by July the 15th, and the board did review the planning LTAP document to come up with which projects were priorities. Upon approval of that list, I made the recommendation to the director that two of the projects in there could conceivably be started and potentially be completed by September of 2016. All of this, of course, hinges on ministry approval. So we still have not heard anything from the ministry. We believe they're in the process of reviewing those requests. So the recommendation to the director was to begin the preliminary engineering work on specifically Alton Village, the addition that has been approved there. It is going to go on the second floor of the building. It was built to take that, so it shouldn't be a surprise in that regard that that should all work out. But we felt that it was a small enough project that any financial risk would be offset by the benefits of potentially having it open for September of 2016, again, depending on when the ministry actually does get around to approving the project. So the director did authorize that, and the report is here for board to be aware of that particular item.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this report tonight? Trustee Gravence?
Through you, Chair. I'm glad to hear that that addition was approved. I'm going to, I'm very happy, but that, that school is bursting at the seams, and I don't know where we'd be without it for September of 2016.
Thank you. So you can just stay where you are, because you're the next item as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Capital update from Superintendent Cullen.
And this isn't our conventional capital update. As you know, we typically have a written report of the status of all the projects. What we felt was probably more appropriate, given that this is the week before the opening of school, that we give trustees a sort of up-to-the-minute update. As you know, we have constructed the two new elementary schools, both of which are scheduled to open Tuesday. Staff have been moved in and are setting up their classrooms, furniture, and other things to varying degrees, depending on what part of the building they're in and what level of readiness it is at. We have received what we refer to as occupancy, so I don't want to make a big drawn-out issue. In the past, we typically have not had what I would refer to as a formal approval to occupy. What we have had is nobody stopping us from occupying, if you want to put it that way, sort of a negative approval. All of the engineers that design the building verify all the particular elements of the buildings that have been built to their requirement, to their standard, to the way it was designed. And once that approval has been received by the chief building official, basically that's the point at which we say we've got a building that can be safely occupied. I should clarify that that may not mean that cosmetic things are in place, because the cosmetic things would not stop us from occupying. They're cosmetic. They're not life safety systems, they're not access things of that nature. So there could be a number of things like that. But both of these buildings are actually in excellent condition, state of readiness, in my opinion, given the time that they started. You may recall that Odenawa was basically a November-ish start, and I mean start from, start to finish. And the Boyne site, we had some delays on actually getting started on construction, so it was also a November start. So it was quite an accelerated timeline to get them to this point. So those are the two big projects that most people become aware of and concerned about. We have a number of other projects going on that will relate to accommodation issues, placement of portables in particular. So all of the portables that were requested in the spring process have now been placed, other than those at Hayden, the secondary school in Burlington. There was an approval cycle there that had to take place, which has now been complete, and the portables will shortly be moved into their final place. They're currently actually sitting in the parking lot, waiting for their final setup and from there. So it'll probably be another three or four weeks before they're actually connected to all of the systems that have to come along with them, but that's in place. All of the other portables are, in fact, in place. There was a number of other capital projects, repairs that were taking place to things like septic beds, stairs, things that can impact potentially the occupants of a school, but I think at this point in time, it's safe to say that none of those are going to prevent students from occupying any of our schools for the start of school. So that's a good news report, in my mind. Happy to take any questions.
That is good news, and it's also really good news that both schools were ready for occupancy before the long weekend. I mean, is that a first?
Well, I'm sure somebody's done it once, but usually we have a pretty busy Labor Day weekend, so we're actually glad that they're at the state they're at, certainly.
That's awesome. I'm looking forward to seeing them. So we have a couple questions or comments. Trustee Gravence?
Through you, Chair. I don't know if this is actually a question for Superintendent Cullen, perhaps someone else could answer it, but with the portables at Hayden, sitting in the parking lot and not usable, I've seen them, they're very close together. Where do those students actually have their classes when they're not set up?
We actually happen to have an excellent source of information sitting in the room tonight, but in, in most cases, what will happen is things like libraries, parts of gyms potentially. I've seen cafeterias used, I've seen other spaces used. Hayden actually has a large concourse, so there's a number of potential places, depending on the specifics of the building, where they could be put on an interim basis. But if you need the specifics on Hayden, I have a sneaking suspicion that Superintendent Newton probably knows the answer to that question.
Superintendent Newton. Get to speak at your first board meeting. I think this is a first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I know they are setting up classes in the community center, being a community partnership, that they are allowed to have those two rooms, as well as the library. A community library has given that space as well, including the cafeteria, which will hold a class, as well as the forums. So, and we just got word tonight that the portables will be moved in place next week. They're looking at doing that, and they should be ready for occupancy by the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Trustee Graves?
Thank you through you, Chair. Superintendent Cullen, you're on my list for trustee comments at the end of, someone to thank for all the work that you've done, and please extend my thanks to your team specifically for, for Boyne and that occupancy coming, you know, more than a week before school's starting, I know is, we're thankful for that. That's a really important one. So thanks for everything that you did to, to make that happen.
I always have to take the opportunity to point out that I don't actually build the schools. So there are a lot of people that will be thanked, based on your comments, that have actually done all of the work, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you through you, Chair. I'm wondering about the status of the expansion on Heritage Glen. I know the date was June-July, but I did note that work was still going through the summer. Can you please tell me?
The last information we have is that it is complete and should be occupiable for the start of school. It was one of those capital projects that we have indicate everything is ready. So that's one of the ones on that list as well. So it should be fully occupied by start of school.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for your report. It was a good news report, definitely. Great way to start the school year. And thank you through you to everyone who's been involved with making it happen. Thank you. Trustee Schneider, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Would you like, we're going to go back. I hope trustees are okay. Would you like to do your portion of the student trustee report?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so has Jovan already talked or?
Yes, he has and apparently he's already left the building.
Oh, okay. So I'll talk about some stuff. Hopefully I don't double up with what he said. But basically, we're going to split our student senate projects into two sections. One, you might have talked about already, is the student voice report day and two is HYLS again. This time, what we learned from our last conference is there's a need for transitions and transition. We're going to focus that process on transitions from eight to nine as well as 12 to post-secondary. So that's what we're going to collaborate with our student senate this year. We have some dates for the student senate and it's going to align almost the same as last year. And for the second, or also, we're planning on doing a council or meetings with the presidents or representatives from student councils from each school to make sure that student councils are doing student voice things as well as their school stuff and maybe aligning just some things from each school to see if they can get ideas from each other and such. So we're currently getting information on the student council representatives from each school. And our student senate forums are going out soon and we'll probably talk to the respective trustees for their help on recruiting senators and hopefully we can get one from each school this year. I think that's it. I'm also working on a website for student senate so more people know what it is and maybe we can have some sort of campaign this year so people really know what student senate is and how they can join, et cetera. So that's about it. Hopefully I didn't repeat too much.
Thank you very much for your report. Does anyone have any comments or questions for trustee Schneider? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your report, trustee Schneider, and we hope you had a great summer and are looking forward to your last year's school.
Thank you. I hope everyone else had a good summer, too.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Seeing none. We're up to the director's report. Acting Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. It's a little funny following the student reports. I'm in awe of those kids. But I have two items to report tonight. The first one is we, the board, had approved money for report card entry. And I can give you the total amount that we spent. It was, and thanks to the people on the outside of this room for their hard work and entering marks, but we spent $38,345.16. And I think the board had authorized up to $100,000. So that's a significant difference. And it was done very well. I mean, a few of the people around the table could have a second job on data entry. The only other item I have is unfortunately, only four trustees are able to go to this because of room. But the Our Kids Network is having a kind of, they're trying to do it almost like TIF. It's family relationships matter the first six years. And there's a filming on Thursday, September 17th, the reception showtime, and it's at the cinemas on Spears Road. So I'll leave these with Kelly, or Chair Amos, I should say, and up to four trustees to go. And if that happens, you can do all the processing through Wendy Spence, our assistant principal for FDK. Sorry? Sure. In fact, it can go out right now. Superintendent Padra Barry.
So if you're interested in going and there's more than four, then we may just have to do a draw, but okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else? Okay. Communications from the chair. Next week, we have scheduled some committee meetings. We have to decide what, first of all, the Chair of Program and Accommodation, do we need a meeting next week for that or is that something that there's? Because I know that PBNG would really like a lot of time and there's, Transportation's also made a request for a little bit of time and so I just, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We are okay to pass on that and not hold our meeting next week to open it up to the other committees.
Okay, thank you. We may have to look at the rest of schedule for the year and rebalance it now that we're into September, but so policy bylaw and governance, I'm assuming would like some time and as well as some time for transportation.
Kelly?
Yes?
This is Ann. I sent an email around earlier, but September 22nd is audit. It goes from five to eight and we've got other committee meetings scheduled from six to nine. So we kind of have a sort of a conflict for the first hour and a half of that at least. So I'm not exactly sure how that all plays in, but if it can be accommodated by taking some pressure off the 22nd and putting it on the 9th, I'm going to have to call in that day anyway, but at least I could attend all the meetings that I normally attend rather than having to go to audit and missing whatever's on the 22nd.
That was part of what I think I said we had to rejig some.
May I make a suggestion?
Can you wait till after trustee Reynolds, Assistant Vice Chair caller?
Yep.
Go ahead, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Just communications can move that night. We've been offered this the evening of the 16th. And if it's, if the co-chair trustee L Harrison's good with that, we're good to go.
The 16th is a board meeting.
Oh, is it? Yes, so the DP, that was just an hour before the board meeting.
Yes, before.
Okay, Vice Chair caller?
Yes, I didn't quite hear what trustee Reynolds said, but I just had an email communication back and forth with trustee Reynolds suggesting that if she wanted that hour on the 16th, that we likely will not need that for any of the onboarding or the exit interview purposes. So she could have that hour if she wanted it for communications.
And that's what she did share with us, so I guess you just.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that's what she was saying or not. I couldn't hear.
So I said we'll have to relook at our committee lists and try and get it a bit more balanced and so we may have to maybe a conference call or a Google Doc with the other chairs. I think that's the only thing I had right now. So is there any trustee comments or questions? Trustee Graves.
Probably should have done this during the committee, but CEAC has been moved. It was the first day of school and that wasn't convenient for a lot of the members of that committee or parents. So just for information, that meeting has been moved to the 15th of September.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not exactly sure where the home for my comment may be, but I will, I'll title it Silo Breaking. And I read with great interest an article in the Beaver, I believe, regarding Holton Regional Chair and Councilors Raise Growth Related Issues at AMO Conference. So that's the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. And as I read down the article, I see that the members of regional and local counselors also met with Education Minister Liz Sandals to discuss the need for long-term funding to support new schools. So I thought that that was fantastic that that item is on their agenda. I would love to be able to participate, perhaps to have us participate in those conversations. And I know that there's a bunch of topics right now that are kind of cross jurisdictions, such as our active transportation conversation that we're having, such as this one, funding of schools, and there are a number of others. So I'm wondering whether the time would be right to invite our co-terminus trustees, some political leaders from the municipalities in the region to sit on a regular basis and have conversations around those things. I think that if we can pull on the oars together collectively, you know, we may start to make some faster headway on some of these things. And when we find ourselves at tables that conversations affecting municipalities may come up, that we can at least have that relationship piece in place. Thank you.
I really like your idea, but I think we need to wait till we have a director, a new director. And I believe that because they should be a piece of that conversation and we need to get, we need to be careful about time, especially with the beginning of school and all the things that are going on. So we're going to have to sort of look at our timelines, but I really like the idea of doing that type of thing. Trustee Danielli.
Thank you. I was fortunate enough to be at that meeting that you just referred to, trustee L Harrison. This is my third time that I've been asked by the municipality of Milton to accompany them. It's a great honor and I appreciate it very much. What is really interesting is where you just said came up at the meeting. They talked about how we work in silos, even the municipality, the region, the board and the Ministry of Education. And what was stressed at that meeting is to work together. And Liz Sandals directed the, everyone to work with the school board, to use the school board as the meeting point to make sure that we are all working together. So it's kind of interesting that that already came up and we were already identified as the hub that will pull it all together.
There you go. Trustee L Harrison.
Okay, thank you. That's awesome and I would love to see us grab this bull by the horns. And you just reminded me what the topic was that I omitted earlier and that is community hubs. I mean, that and the others and probably other topics that have been unnoted at this point in time would just be, you know, I understand we need a new director and there's some pieces that need to fall into place, but I wouldn't like to see us wait on this for very long.
Thank you. And seeing no other comments or questions, can I have a motion to reconvene into private? Trustee Harrison, seconded by trustee Gerbence. All those in favor?
Yes.
Is that under motion to adjourn? Is that what I do? It says motion to adjourn, but it's actually reconvene. Trustee Papit, have you voted? That passes. Thank you very much. So we will reconvene in private in five minutes while we give our community members a chance to leave. I don't believe it will take very long.